And persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. And I believe Ann Cleaver, or Cleavers are here, and you have some guests. I'd like to present.
Hello, Mayor Plungy and members of the city council. My name is Joe Cleaver, and it's my pleasure tonight to introduce some special guests that we have from Soviet Union. If you remember, about this time last year, we had four Soviets who visited the city of Cupertino. And quite by coincidence, tonight, one of them has returned. Igor Tipans.
Ah, there he is. Welcome back.
Today Igor is getting his post-doctorate degree from Duke University. And I think he would admit that his trip to Cupertino and some of the, particularly one person that he met, was very instrumental in getting him on the track to get to Duke University where he is today. And we're very proud of Igor's. He's studying biomedical engineering. He's actually an engineer by trade, but he's studying biomedical engineering specializing in blood chemistry and the electrical impulses regarding cardiac items. So, next week, he will be, or I'm sorry, tomorrow, he'll be at UC Medical Center continuing his studies. So, really proud to have Igor's with us again this year. And we have some other special guests. And for these guests, it's been a real odyssey because they left Moscow via aeroflot to Kennedy Airport. They were met at Kennedy Airport by a special representative of Delta Airlines and the sister-in-law of Phil Wagner, who was on the math department at Lindbergh High School. And from there, they flew via Delta out to San Francisco. And all that sounds easy enough, except what goes unnoticed is some of the work that went on behind the scenes. And just at the last minute, for your information, I could just update you on some of the things that went on. But Pan Am could not honor Moscow's transportation plans that had to do with the ruble and the dollar. And consequently, there were no funds for the flight from Kennedy to San Francisco. Well, Harriet Gardner showed her customary courage and commitment to the project and got on it immediately. She contacted Norman Mineta's office. He in turn contacted the Department of Transportation, the DOT called the Pan Am and some other airlines. And as a result, we're able to obtain some, Delta was able to waive some restrictions, which enabled us to get a favorable rate and got some personalized service in the meantime. So, Harriet was able to pull that all off herself and was able to raise the needed money by getting on the telephone. And so, it was all pulled together right at the last minute instead of collapsing. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Harriet Gardner, who will introduce our special guests. Harriet?
I would just like to add a postscript. I was extremely impressed with the citizens of Cupertino. Every citizen that I called and told them about the situation that we were in with funds gave a donation. There isn't a citizen in Cupertino who turned me down. So, I feel like hats off to Cupertino. The reason why these citizens are here is because of the larger community that's out there supporting this project.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to introduce Olga Kozidoy. We are most pleased to have Olga here. She works at the Program Systems Institute. She's a computer specialist, and she was a teacher of our students at the International Summer Computer Camp. She is married, and she is a mother of a four-year-old son. And so, much thanks to her husband, who's at home taking care of a four-year-old tonight so Olga could be with us. And at this time, I would like for Olga to introduce her students. Also, I would like to introduce Gloria Heinsteine, one of our Russian teachers in, she lives in Santa Clara, but she certainly supports what we do here in Cupertino. And she is going to help be our interpreter. She'd like to present her students to you.
Vladimilnikova. Olya Sarancka. Ania Ivanova. Natacha Knizuk. Lyuba Kitaeva. Paulina Gaidar, наша самая маленькая школьница.
This is our youngest student.
Lyuva Julia Baldenkova. Sasha Rudenko. And наши мальчики, Миша Shireev. And Дима Starostin.
This is our youngest, the youngest male student and the oldest male student.
Мне хочется поблагодарить жителей города Купертино за их приглашение, которое сделало возможной нашу встречу с ними здесь.
She wants to thank the citizens of Cupertino for their kindness and inviting them here.
И за ту помощь, которую они оказали при осуществлении этого путешествия, при нашей поездке.
And for your help in getting them here for the trip and all the arrangements.
Мне хочется теперь зачитать письмо от мэра нашего города.
She's going to read a letter from the mayor of their city. I might have to ask Igor for a few vocabulary here.
Вам. Дорогие американские друзья, господин мэр.
Dear American friends and Mr. Mayor.
Мне приятно ответить на ваше обращение к жителям города Переславля Залеского с предложением превратить наши города в города побратимы.
It's wonderful for me to answer your обращение, to your обращение with this обращение. Okay, your invitation to the inhabitants of, to the inhabitants of our town, Perislav Zalievsky, and for the invitation to come to our sister city.
Мы также заинтересованы в развитии долгосрочных дружеских отношений с вашим городом для достижения взаимопонимания между нашими людьми и нашими странами.
We're also interested in the relations, of long-term relationship, friendly relationships with your city for the goal of better understanding between our two people and our two countries.
Граждане нашего города включились в организацию непрерывного диалога и поиска пути взаимодействия.
The citizens of our city include in, are included in the organization of непрерывного, непрерывного, non-stop dialogue и поиска...
Searching. Searching.
Searching?
Yes.
Searching.
(Laughter).
Of the ways for взаимодействия, cooperation, okay.
Мы горячо поддерживаем ваше предложение о содействии друг другу в техническом оснащении наших городов, а также в совершенствовании системы народного образования и здравоохранения.
We warmly hold your suggestions for unity, between mutual unity, in the technical отношения, technical relations between our cities, and even in the, in the...
Лучшение.
...betterment of the systems of our cultural...
Education.
Cultural.
Education.
Education, yeah, education.
Здравоохранение.
Здравоохранение. Education and health, healthcare, okay.
Мы благодарны жителям города Купертино за усилия по организации поездки наших детей в ваш город, и надеемся, что в будущем все проблемы будут решаться нами самостоятельно.
We are very thankful to the inhabitants of Cupertino for their, so Celia courage, Celia, what would, efforts, efforts in the organization of our trip, of our children to your city, and hope that in the future, all the problems will be solved by our, independently, sort of, nami, by ourselves, that we will be able to handle everything on our own in the future.
Мы с нетерпением ждем визита ваших граждан, а также надеемся на встречу с вами на советской или американской земле.
We are impatiently waiting the visit of your citizens and even hope that to meet with you in the Soviet and on American soil.
Я думаю, что наши усилия послужат укреплению мира и взаимопонимания между нашими народами.
I hope that our, Celia, again, I forgot that word, that our cooperation will serve to strengthen the world and to, mutual, and mutual, okay, will strengthen the mutual understanding between our cultures, our peoples.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I think I'll go down here and use the microphone a bit.
Сейчас одна из моих школьниц, Наташа Книзюк, скажет несколько слов о нашей делегации.
So, some of the students now are going to say a few words to you.
Дорогие американские друзья, мне от имени нашей делегации предоставили слово высказать вам большую признательность всем тем людям, которые приняли активное участие в том, чтобы мы сюда приехали и, в общем, помогают нам, показывают вашу страну. Нам здесь очень нравится, очень интересно, и мы надеемся, что вот обмен такими делегациями, какое происходит, послужит более крепкому сближению наших городов, знакомству наших людей.
Okay, wait a minute. Okay, I don't think I'm gonna say it word for word, but she's very, very grateful to you for inviting you, inviting her to this country, and she's very eager to meet people and to, to know everyone here. If you go, говорите миллионея, пожалуйста.
Отсюда мы увезем очень много впечатлений и дома, у себя в городе будем рассказывать...
Okay, she has had many impressions of the city and so far and of the homes.
И у себя дома мы будем рассказывать об этой стране, о прекрасных людях, которые здесь живут.
And she, at home, she will be able to talk about the wonderful people that live here.
И мы хотим пожелать вам всем счастья, здоровья, главное - мира, чтобы был на земле мир. Большое вам спасибо всем.
And she wants to wish you goodwill and, что еще?
Счастья.
Happiness and health and health.
Главное, чтобы на земле был мир.
And, and the most important, that on earth we have peace.
Большое вам всем спасибо.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Сейчас мои девочки споют для вас несколько песен.
They're going to sing a song, a couple of songs.
Right over there.
The Ruski, Ruski Piesin?
Да, русский народный.
Wanna give a little, okay, this is a Russian folk song. Okay. (Laughter).
красива, как ред глаза, по плечам развита русская коса, по плечам развита русская коса, русская головка умы без концов, ты о чем мечтаешь, девица краса? Ты о чем мечтаешь, девица краса?
Beautiful.
Okay, are you going, do you want a translation? I didn't get everything, but it's about a little, a young girl who's sleeping, beautiful Russian girl, that's sort of the gist of it. Do you want to dance?
No.
Oh, okay. At the tonic?
No, no.
In the middle of Dance Floor, Bob. Yeah.
У нас ночь субботея, она завтра воскресенье, парня ты моя, сударня ты моя, о, с воскресенье ко мне ночью, ванюшь приходил, три кармана он подарка приносил, парня ты моя, сударня ты моя, о, приносил первый карман с деньгами, второй карман с орехами, парня ты моя, сударня ты моя, о, с орехами, третий карман с изюмом, третий карман с изюмом, парня ты моя, сударня ты моя, о, с изюмом, а ты изюм, а губы сладкие, нельзя смилым целоваться, парня ты моя, сударня ты моя, о, целоваться нельзя смилым целоваться, можно только обниматься, парня ты моя, сударня ты моя, о, обниматься, парня ты моя, сударня ты моя, о, обниматься.
Wow. That was, that was a wonderful folk song. I have that record, Theodore Bechel, have you ever heard of him?
Yes, yes.
And he has that on, I have that record, and it's a kind of a gypsy song, and I don't know all the words, but it's a, it's a very vibrant one. I don't think it needs much translation.
А теперь мы хотим от нашей делегации преподнести вам небольшой подарок.
And now they're going to bring you a little gift. Oh, that's wonderful.
I'll come down there.
Это русский самовар.
Yes, the samovar, Russian samovar.
Unfortunately, our staff photographer broke a kneecap, and she's in a cast. Otherwise, she'd be taking pictures.
Where are all the photographers?
There we go.
Oh, wonderful. The Russian word for thank you is спасибо.
Спасибо.
Большое спасибо.
My uncle comes from a little different part. The Russians, they say achu.
Oh, achu.
Sounds like you're sneezing.
Oh. John?
Yes.
I would, I'd like to share some special news with you tonight, and that is, on March 19th, Blada Melenkova's mother, who is superintendent of schools in Perislavl, is going to come to Cupertino along with two educators. So, I'm just really pleased to say that there are other follow-on projects that are coming up in the very near future.
Great, beautiful. Thank you. Let me put this down for a second. First of all, thank you very, very much. You're so welcome in our city. We're happy to have you. I don't know if you want to do a little, how much English, do you understand some English? Very good, very good. First of all, the age range of the group here, they're students, how old, from 10 to 16, so like in elementary school and then into high school, okay? I teach in a high school. In fact, in 1963, when I started teaching there, at our high school, they taught Russian at our high school. Now, because of various cuts, we don't have that. But perhaps with this sister-city relationship, we'll get back to teaching Russian. Those of us on the council, we're still working on our Japanese, and now we're gonna start working on Russian because we have a Russian, Japanese sister city. But I believe, the teacher's name is Olga? Olga, yes. Olga, you, I can say this to you as a fellow teacher, first of all, it must be much easier teaching in Russia than it is in the United States. I mean, I look at you, and you are the mother of a child. Look at me, how long I've been teaching, and look what happened to me teaching here. But when I looked out there, I was amazed that you were the teacher because you do look like one of the students. You look like one of the students in my high school class, so, yes. So, I hope everything is going well with your family back home and send them our best wishes. Council, do you have any questions? So, we have the age range in here. Anything else about...
Are they all from the same school?
Are you all from different school or within the city, the same school? Different school, different schools. Okay, very good. Now, how much longer will you be here? About...
Nineteenth June, till the ninth.
Till the ninth, okay. So, you have a little more time left in Cupertino. And I know you're going to be here tomorrow afternoon. We have a reception at five o'clock tomorrow, so we'll look forward to seeing you there. But I certainly, on behalf of those of us on the council and the citizens of Cupertino, first of all, wish to thank the Cleavers and Harriet Gardner for all the work you've done, and for the other people who are hosting, the people, I was really pleased when you said you called and people in Cupertino responded, because that's certainly something we'd like to hear, that there is this openness. And certainly, the things that the young people spoke about, about this idea of peace and living together in unity, it certainly is one of our goals as well. And we're, we're happy to see now that we've reached out to Asia, to Japan, we have in Italy, to Russia, so we are extending our hands of friendship throughout the world. And we're happy that you are taking our hands and we are taking yours, and that we are developing this relationship. So, once again, thank you very, very much. And Igor, I was on your, the biomedical engineering, I was wondering if you could come into my classroom and do something to motivate some of my students, you know, maybe do a little something, a little mechanical engineering with them. Today was the first day back to school, and believe me, some of them aren't functioning too well, so. Anyway, once again, thank you very, very much, this beautiful, beautiful gift. This will be proudly displayed in the city, that's for certain. So, thank you once again.
What time on the ninth are they leaving?
John, you might want to ask a little more clearly about the reception tomorrow.
Eleven ten PM at night, okay.
Okay, thank you. I would also point out to members of the community who are here tonight, who also may be watching on TV, that tomorrow at five o'clock in our city hall here, there will be a reception for our guests. We are hosting by the city, so anyone who wishes to come by, happy to have them. And you have a little announcement form on that.
Well, we have announcements about that, and we also have a musical. If you want some more music on Sunday afternoon at Hyde Junior High.
Okay, Sunday afternoon, Hyde Junior High.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Children from Amata Vista and Lindbrook and the Soviet Union will all be singing.
Great, wonderful, fantastic. Yes, please do. Thank you very, very much.
You have, at this time of year, you would have much snow?
Of course.
Of course.
How much?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Now, you, they arrived here when December...
Twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh. I want to know, were you the ones who brought the snow to our hills when you came from Russia? We had snow on our hills here.
Really?
Did they just miss it? Was that it? It's just, when they came twenty seventh, yeah, we had a run on Christmas. So, we were trying to have snow so you would feel our... We wanted you to feel very comfortable, so we tried to have snow, but it all melted. Now, I meant to ask you last night, what do you teach?
I?
Yes, you are a teacher.
I am not teacher. I work in program system.
Oh, programs.
But I was teaching children at summer computer camp.
Okay, summer computer.
Yes, and I was teaching loga and praga, computer language.
Very good, very good, okay. My wife is a teacher who teaches about computers, too, yes.
I'm good at it, isn't it?
It's okay.
It's probably cool.
We have any, now, I don't know if any of you can speak some English?
Yes.
A little bit?
Some, some.
Very little. Let's, let me ask this question. Being here, what surprised you the most?
Что делалось вам больше сюрприз?
(In Russian)
Maybe?
Yes, and...
The aquarium, she likes the aquarium.
The otters, she liked the otters, okay?
She liked.
Very good.
When we do, in Russia, the, there is not very big difference between our country. It's very surprised us.
Okay, okay.
I want to, I want to say the most difference between our country, that in America, all people speak English. (Laughter). It's so unusual.
Russian, okay, that's the big difference.
Most difference.
Okay, but you are doing very well in English.
Oh, thank you.
Did you study English for some time? Did you study?
Sometimes.
Sometime, sometime. You can do very, very well. Oh, good, we have, let's see, we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, okay. We have the pins, first of all. Okay, and your name is?
Olga.
Olga, okay. There you are. And this is?
My name is Natasha.
Natasha, okay. Thank you. And over here, we have...
My name is Luba.
Luba, okay.
Thank you.
And boy, I wish you could read what's that word?
I know. (In Russian)
And your name is?
Ania.
Ania, okay. Thank you. And now we have, let's see, okay, we show the others, this is for our, we the people...
Thank you. And now we have, let's see. We show the others, this is for our, we, the people, our bicentennial.
Thank you.
For you. Thank you very much. And I thanked you earlier for this beautiful. Now, let's see, anything, as they are going to, oh, yes, you have some. Oh, we have one other member, John, come on up here. We also have from our city council, Mr. Gatto. He is coming over here. In Santa Clara County, in this area, many years ago, out here, all fruit trees.
Apricot trees.
Apricot, oh, yeah, very good. So what we. So what we have here is dried fruit. The fruit that was grown and dried and the prunes, plums with chocolate. Chocolate, okay, oh, they're lighting up. Universe lighting. So this one is for your mayor. Take back to your mayor. Council members.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. So why don't you bring the students in here? We want to get a picture of here. You're welcome.
You're welcome. It is a da rupa.
Let's see, we have everybody here?
Do you have us all in?
Let's see, okay. You don't get any flashes. All set, line?
One more.
Okay.